Good evening, everybody. Call to order. Good evening. Welcome to the Joint Board of Education meeting of Evanston-Skokie District 65 and Evanston Township High School District 202 on February 2nd, 2/2/22. So, I am happy to see everyone here. We know that there is an overflow space in our Welcome Center, E112 as well, so we may have others watching as well. So can we have a roll call, please? We'll start with District 65.
Here.
What is going?
Here.
Here.
Felton?
Here.
Here.
Oh, here.
Here.
Thank you. Roll coffee 202, please.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. So the first item on the agenda is Board and Superintendent's comments, and we will start with our guests, District 65. So, we'll start with you, Anya.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. We're always happy to have the opportunity to demonstrate what it looks like, to collaborate on behalf of and in honor of care for our community. This is the type of positive working relationship that our community deserves. We share the same families, we share the same students, and we have big hopes and dreams for all of them. And so, I'm grateful that we have the opportunity to come together and discuss some important work and demonstrate that for our community. Thank you for having us.
Absolutely. Dr. Horton?
Yes. First, I want to say really nice technology here. We need to look at this. It's really exciting to be here. I feel like Dr. Witherspoon and ourselves, we meet a lot, probably two times a week now, as of late. So we see each other a lot, and I get a chance to learn about the work that's happening here intimately, learn about the work that's happening here in ETHS and vice versa for us. But we're just excited tonight to really talk about how we're working towards creating a better D65 and 202, and overall, the Evanston-Skokie City, the cities. And it's just a moment for us to have these public discussions, but just know that there's so much more happening beyond these discussions. So, thank you all for being here tonight and looking forward to a rich discussion.
Thank you. Anyone else from the 65 board? If not, Dr. Witherspoon.
Well, thank you. First of all, yes, hello and welcome, everybody. And, Dr. Horton, it's just so good to see you. And we do interact and communicate and talk a lot, and I think it's good for both districts. And I think it's just very representative of how much we understand that we're serving the whole community, and the more the two districts can be doing together, the more everybody and absolutely the more every student will benefit. So it's just great to have all of you here. I do want to, because we've got a room full of school board members, I'd actually like to take a minute and give a shout out. I don't know that people always understand what a commitment it is to be a school board member. And I can tell you, because I've worked closely with school board members over the years, and I work closely with this board, and I follow what District 65 Board is doing, and I just want to lift up the fact that, two or three things to remember. One, these are elected officials, but this is a completely voluntary job. I mean, these are citizens who have made a decision to serve the community. They get zero compensation for serving on the school boards. And actually, all you need to do is kind of follow the media to realize, they must put in a lot of hours just meeting, because you do. And that's the part that the public sees. What they don't always see is all the homework you're doing, and all the preparation that you're making for the different committees you're on, the preparation that you're making for meetings like this, and then just all of the interaction and the listening and the communicating with your constituents in the community as well, which I know just, you know, takes sometimes literally hours and hours. So while we have a room full of school board members, I just wanted to say, certainly on my behalf, but I really believe I can say this on behalf of the whole community, you're doing yeoman's work. You're really out there advocating for the children of this community, and we do appreciate you. So great to have you here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. So I appreciate this time and this meeting, and you're right, Dr. Horton, we are collaborating and articulating between the two districts on many different levels, and this is only one. This is certainly just a couple times a year that we do this, but the work obviously has to continue. So the complication is that we're doing our work as a district, and, which is demonstrated by District 202's tardiness in getting here, and I do apologize for that. We had some business. And I'm sure District 65 is as well, doing a lot of work as a district. But we also recognize the importance of working together, working as a whole community, recognizing visually and in committees and just at all the levels necessary, that we are serving one community, our community, the Evanston-Skokie community. And it is important for us to keep talking to each other, work out some of those difficulties, those kinks, so that we can make sure that at the end of the day, we are doing our best on behalf of our students and the entire Evanston-Skokie community. So that's what we're doing here. This is, again, one step, and I'm excited that we're here, I'm excited that we're doing it. Welcome to our space. And yes, the technology is cool, but just make sure you turn the red light on before you talk, because otherwise, no one will hear you. So thank you again, and I'll move on with the agenda. So Dr. Beavis is coming up. The first thing on the agenda is comments from the public.
Figured I'd set up shop up here. Let me read the public comment introduction, and we have two folks signed up for public comment. Okay. Speakers who have signed up for public comment will be invited in the order they signed up to address the board for up to three minutes. I will keep time and signal you at the end of two minutes, as a courtesy. I'll also go one and then, you know, let you know, it's time to stop at the three-minute mark in the event that that becomes necessary. Speakers are asked to come forward and speak at the lectern. Normally, I deal from over there, but it's right there. Public comments generally pertain to school district matters, but comments about any individual are expressly prohibited. Please understand that the school board does not respond to public comments, but will listen carefully and will follow up as the board deems appropriate. Our first public comment this evening is from Julie Schatz.
A parent?
Yeah, the red light should be on.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you. I'm a parent, a D65 parent. Thank you so much for allowing the children, staff, and caregivers of District 65 to remove their masks during recess and arrival and dismissal as of last week. I have heard wonderful feedback from parents and students alike. I also thank you for allowing students like my kindergartner to eat a snack at school today for the first time in over a month. Today, I ask you to consider updating another policy where, again, District 65 is an outlier. Please give students and staff mask choice at school. I work in a nearby school district that tomorrow will be joining over 700 out of the 850 school districts in Illinois to offer mask choice to all. Like District 65, my school district was not named as a defendant in the recent lawsuit involving mask mandates. My superintendent's reasoning for his recommendation to allow mask choice was as follows. COVID case numbers have plummeted in both the community and in the schools, there are high vaccination rates as well, the state's, the J-Car Committee decision not to extend the emergency rule issued by ADPH, the appellate court's ruling on February 18th that upheld the decision that the governor's mask mandate in schools no longer stands, the CDC is set to announce a revised masking guidance soon. There are clear overarching adverse educational impacts to masking, and transitions and pivots are an essential part of the evolution of response to COVID-19. All of this reasoning applies to District 65 as well. Children and teachers should be given mask choice based on their unique risk tolerance and medical vulnerabilities. We know children are at lower risk of serious illness from COVID-19. Universal masking of healthy children is not an effective strategy in reducing serious illness and death of the vulnerable in the community. Fortunately, there are many effective ways for vulnerable people to protect themselves, like getting vaccinated and boosted, wearing well-fitted, high-grade masks as needed, drugs like Pavlocid, Evusheld. There are wonderful things going on. Schoolchildren should not bear the burden of protecting our community. As a speech-language pathologist, I am thrilled that my students will be able to hear my voice clearly tomorrow, because I will not be required to wear a mask during speech therapy sessions.
One minute.
I'm thankful that they will be finally able to see my face clearly, as I show them how to produce speech sounds. Most importantly, I will be able to see many students' smiles, and they will be able to see mine. I will respect the choice of families who continue to have their children wear masks, and I know that they will respect my choice to take mine off. I hope that District 65 students will have the same opportunities soon as most people in our state, in our country, and in the world that they already have. Join the many nearby districts and communities such as Lincolnwood, Willmet, Skokie, Parkridge, Niles, Highland Park, Highwood, and now even Evanston, District 202, that have all decided to offer mask choice to students and staff. Change is hard, but we can do hard things with compassion, grace, and respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, our second speaker is Mohammed Shimara.
Good evening. So, I'm here in support of a mask, a transition to mask choice, a thoughtful one. I am for it because it's normal, because normal interaction between students and teachers is important, and facial expression is part of that. So shortly after you loosened the mask mandate for outdoors, I asked my daughter how she felt, and, yeah, she was happy that she could take a break, but most importantly, she was happy that she could remember some of the faces of her fellow students. She had forgotten how some of them looked like. So, you know all that. You know that facial expression is very important. What we're not sure about is the data. There's data all over the place, some, you know, you can cut up the data in so many ways. That is always going to be there, and what we need to do is we need to have a thoughtful transition towards mask choice. I don't want to, I don't want my kids to be put in a position where they have to either feel ashamed or feel guilt-ripped
Two minutes.
for following what their parents are deciding. It's been a chaotic two years for all of us, especially our kids. I call upon you to guide them in the transition towards mask choice, perhaps give them more breaks indoors. Even my daughter, who I told her she can, my youngest daughter, I told her that she can take her mask outside, she still doesn't, because she's now used to it, which is kind of sad, but it's also the way things are. So perhaps, for example, allow people, allow students in their class, if they're seated in their, on their tables, to take off their masks, slowly transition to it. So, the one thing we do not need is that we do not need chaos, and we do not need people feeling peer pressure, and we do not need for there to be any more animosity
One minute.
in this district between students, teachers, and the teachers' union, of course, has their say, and parents. So I trust that you will take that into consideration, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Beavis. Thank you to those who spoke. Okay, the next item on the agenda is items for information, and the first item is reboot beyond the pandemic. And I believe
And we have
Dr. Beavis and Dr. Beardsley?
Yep, for sure. And anybody else they're deciding to include?
And they're going to explain what that means to everybody.
Yes.
All right. This report will last three minutes. No. All right. So, good evening. Dr. Beardsley and I are here to provide an update on the joint literacy goal and to begin a conversation about the reboot for the goal with considerations for what has been experienced and learned over the past two years, as we have experienced the COVID pandemic, and consider what our new normal will be. In January 2014, District 65 and 202 approved a joint literacy goal for the districts. The goal states, "District 65 and District 202 will ensure that all students are proficient readers in college and career-ready by the time they reach 12th grade." The goal is written as a 12-year goal, and the boards acknowledge that making, meeting it will take time. However, both districts are committed to realizing it starting in pre-kindergarten and building proficiency over time. The districts are committed to attaining the goal in one K-12 cycle. So the first portion of the memo in your packet includes the literacy data that we provide annually to help monitor progress toward the goal using thresholds and visualizations that we defined and agreed upon in February 2019. Well, we did. And we thought that would work. Hold on. Yeah, I got it. I thought people were running to get me a battery. Okay. So what you see here, let me just jump ahead here. We have included a matched District 65-202, oh, go back one, William. There we go. Great. Awesome. Thank you much. Appreciate it. A cohort, a matched cohort analysis for the class of 2025 MAP-RIT Grade 8 to STAR Grade 9 comparison. The matched cohort analysis shows nearly 80% of the students are either meeting both the MAP and STAR thresholds or meeting neither threshold, which demonstrates that the two tests are largely measuring grade-level literacy in a comparable manner. What I want to draw your attention to is the upper-right quadrant and the lower-left quadrant. Okay? That's where the vast majority of those little dots are. Each dot is an individual test score, and you'll see that they're either meeting both assessments or not meeting. So what that tells us is that they're aligned, and that's something that we spent a great deal of time and a great deal of discussion since 2014, working through. So it's very important to mention that. In the matched cohort analysis, the class of 2025 shows 53.4% of students meeting or exceeding both thresholds, and that remains fairly consistent with matched cohort analysis for the class of 2022, where 53.7% of students met or exceeded both thresholds for all students. So this seems to be very consistent. It's a very consistent standardized measure over time. The analytics increase that there's a decrease in the number of students who did not meet either threshold in the class of 2025, with 25.7% of the students not meeting either threshold in comparison with 30, not meeting each threshold in 2022. There are also decreases in the percent of Black, Latinx, and White students who did not meet either threshold in the class of 2025. However, this decrease was not mirrored with an increase in the percent of students meeting both. The class of 2025 Latinx population showed an increase in the number of students who met both thresholds, 35.3% in 2025 versus 26.7% for the class of 22, 22, but that was not the case for Black or White students. And all of this is in your packet, and we can answer questions regarding any of these charts and tables. We're just elevating a few of them that we thought were sufficiently important for that.
And we'll move on to speak to a couple of the other charts that were included in your memo. And again, we're really just trying to provide a high-point summary and then move us into a conversation about reboot and create space for conversation for the boards. In response to the board's request to see longitudinal data on the literacy goal, we've included in the memo a new chart. This chart is titled Joint Literacy Thresholds Exit Results, and is the one that is on the screen currently. This chart captures data for different groups of students, our 8th and 11th graders at the same point in time, specifically spring of each year. Additionally, the chart allows the boards to see the percent of students who are meeting the district thresholds over time. The, due to the COVID pandemic interruption, we do not see in any of those visualizations, however, the data point for an 8th grade class and an 11th grade class. The final set of tables, let me see if I can drive this the right way. Nope, not quite. Nope. All right. So, actually, we didn't include the final set of tables in the slide. The final set of tables are essentially focused on school year 2021, spring analysis of grade bands. And essentially, this analysis shows the percent of students who met the grade-level thresholds in all grades, 3rd through 8th grade, for the school year 2020-21. We disaggregate this data by race, gender, and free-introduced lunch status. These patterns largely remain consistent, and we continue to see an unacceptable opportunity gap by race. This data is only available for District 65 students this year due to pandemic testing conditions. Additional information in the memo included an update on the District 65 and District 202 collaboration, which continues both with our regular meetings and some project work, as well as updates on the literacy work in District 65 and District 202. We're absolutely willing to take any questions on the literacy work and the collaboration work, but really wanted to focus the last couple of minutes on the final section of the memo, which addresses our desire to review and reboot the literacy goal with consideration for our new normal. We noted in the memo that the impact on experience and learning has been significant for our students. The last time that ETHS seniors experienced a full, normal school year, they were freshmen. Our 2nd graders have not experienced a full, uninterrupted, uninterrupted onsite learning year in District 65. Our 7th graders were 4th graders the last time they experienced a full and uninterrupted school year, and our 1st graders, only no school with masks on. This is why we need to benchmark where we are today academically and build upon that foundation. While developing and measuring the joint literacy goal is important, it's also important to remember that the students in front of us today have not had a stable school experience. That is why it is critically important to revisit and revise the joint literacy goal to reflect our continued commitment to reading proficiency, college and career readiness, and to acknowledge that the work going forward needs to be responsive to the students that we are serving today. The district teams recommend engaging in a process that includes digging into the considerations that are on the slide in front of you and in the memo, to ultimately revise the joint goal or expand the focus of the collaborative work to better capture a more holistic view of a student who is a proficient reader and college and career-ready. We ask the boards to consider this recommendation and the considerations captured, again, on the slide and in the memo. Essentially, and I'll kind of walk through these six questions, and then we will open up for questions and conversation. We think important points to consider are, one, how might the goal be revised to acknowledge our current context? How might the goal be revised to align with each district's commitment to race and equity? How has college and career readiness evolved in eight years? What are the research-based indicators of success? Where do we want to be in one year? Where do we want to be in five years? What does each commitment, each district, commit to investing in? And we will open up to conversation and questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Thank you for sending it ahead of time and that we were able to look through all of the data, so that's been, that's helpful. So, board, questions? Comments? Thoughts?
Oh, I'm sorry. Joy?
Thank you. Thank you for the update. I think my first question, I love these consideration questions, because I think the board work of having a joint goal is really important, but my question is really about the on-the-ground reality that you all face in both, in both districts, and it is a new normal. And I think it was in maybe our board update this week, the number of MTSS or Branching Minds plans are, you know, it's like 20% of our students have plans for indicating support, right? I imagine the stressors on the academic skill centers, the literacy labs, like, all of the support staff is overwhelming. How do you help the general educators who are teaching the core, that tier-one instruction? How do you help them adjust to the new normal to understand that their new expectations have changed a little bit, that they're a part of that transition, they're a part of that, that we can't just put everybody with a reading specialist, because it's, there's too much. So we need that all-hands-on-deck approach to literacy and mathematics and every other piece. How's that impacted? Maybe both of you could speak to what the picture looks like within your systems.
Sure. So, speaking a little bit from District 65, I think I'll just cite two examples. And I think, you know, so first, I would, in our K-5 spaces, we shifted our schedules coming into the school year to build in essentially an acceleration block during our students' day across our K-5 schools and our magnets. And what that did is it essentially shifted some time that had been previously dedicated to specific academic blocks into a flexible acceleration block. And we gave latitude to our schools and our educators to then figure out how to best design the use of that time and space to be responsive to our students' needs. And so what we see in those situations is, that is periods of time where some of our students are going to the academic skill center. It's a period of time where students are potentially walking to other classrooms and educators to get targeted learning, that they need to address either unfinished learning or unfinished teaching. It's opportunities for kids to be able to receive more time and practice, or to engage in an opportunity to elevate learning above a grade-level expectation. And educators are using that window, they're planning ahead of time, figuring out how to group students, figuring out how to rotate students, and then also leaning into the spaces that they feel most comfortable teaching, so that we have essentially a place where we're building off of each other's strengths to support students. And so the inclusion of the acceleration block in our K-5 structure, I think, is a good example of creative problem-solving and creating space for increased agency for both students and educators to address those needs. A second place, and we've discussed this at the board level before, but we shared an update on middle school math today in our curriculum advisory committee, and discussed and shared with the broader curriculum advisory committee essentially how we've built the math block in our middle school, which includes kind of 40 minutes of focused instruction with 20 minutes essentially of task-choice time. And students, again, have that opportunity to assess where they are in their learning and lean into tasks that are essentially at three different levels, and have an opportunity to receive more practice on the skill that they're working in, and it, kind of a, taking the grade-level learning and extending it a little bit, and then going much deeper. And so there's kind of a high-level rigor task, a medium-level rigor task, and an opportunity to practice and build, essentially. And one of the things that the math educator, this is a shift that came out of collaboration between the director of staff, now director of math, and the math educators. They essentially designed this structure in partnership with some of the team from Desmos, which is an instructional material we're using, and they've built the task libraries. They're in their second year of doing this, and they've been surveying students and using feedback from students to continue to improve that, that work. And so we're really excited about that, and the way we ended that conversation in our curriculum advisory committee today was, this is a structure that we're using in math, but there's nothing about this structure that couldn't necessarily be transferable to other environments. And so, again, this idea of options and agency and some flexibility and time to be able to address needs.
Just briefly, one of the things we did was we moved to a block schedule, and we've recently surveyed our staff, and 82% of our staff believe that the block has supported the academic needs of students. students. That was one of our, our goal, one of our goals at the outset was to do two things. One was to slow down the pace of the day. We have 10-minute passing periods. We wanted to de-stress the environment. And the other thing was we wanted to meet the academic needs of our, of our students. So that's been a very positive development. We're not instructionally perfect. I, I don't want to, I don't want to pretend that it's not difficult, you know, adjusting to, to literally twice as much instructional time at once, but we're making progress. There's a whole heck of a lot less sit and get and more hands-on. And one of the things we found is that in the more hands-on courses, that they're actually able to cover more material in this setting. And that makes sense. But we found that the more we engage students, the more engaged students are, the more responsive they are in the classroom and the better off they are. It's not perfect, it's, you know, I mean, it's a pandemic and we've, but we've made strides in that area. The other thing we did was we've combined our study centers. Our study centers used to be in the hub, in our student center. We moved them right before the, right, the, the year we went on remote, enhanced e-learning was the year we consolidated our, our study centers. You probably didn't notice that if you're at home, but we did. And what we found is that it's, it's much better to have a, all-in-one, one-stop-shop for students to get the, the academic supports they need. So that's really, really been a boost. And we've also gone and we've said, you know, we changed one of the things that we did for, we used to have detentions, just traditional detentions. So imagine you're sitting in a room much like this one for about an hour, doing nothing. We figured that's not a good, that's not a good use of a student's time. So we've allowed students to make up their detentions in AM support, in, in an academic study center. So they, they go in, they, they log their time, they get support and help from their teachers, and it's been a much more positive experience with an academic focus. So things like that, they both rehumanize the environment, but they also support our kids academically. So that, those are two things I can point to directly.
Pat?
And then, uh?
So, thank you. I, I really appreciate the, the idea of revisiting the goal within the reality of our world. Obviously, goals get set, but they also should reflect who we are, what's going on, and who our students are. So I think that's a great, and I think you did a nice job with the report. I guess, and maybe there's not a, you just gave some nice examples that are in the zone, but I guess what I would say is in addition to reframing the goal is really being, using this as an opportunity to really think differently about what we're doing and the impact it's having. So Stacy pointed out early in the presentation that you've gotten a good, you're in a good place, you know, like, how to evaluate, but yet aren't, we're still seeing those huge gaps. And it's nothing any of us are happy with, and most, especially, I'm sure, our educators who are trying really, really hard and doing lots of really good work. So I guess, I feel like this is a, an opportunity to really think about things differently in terms of the literacy and, and really, you know, if there are things that you've already discussed and you want to share in terms of ideas you have for what that might look like. But I would really push in a way that maybe, maybe the opportunity of COVID is to really allow for that significant push and change because we're just, we keep being where we are, and we can't do that anymore. And I know you all know that. But anyway, if you have thoughts on what that might look like, or if you can just put that into the mix as you're moving forward and come back to us with some really, you know, built-on experience and research, but really out-of-the-box ideas, I guess, to, to move us forward.
Thank you, Pat. I take that as license to be creative, which is, if you get a chance to watch our, our 202 board meeting, the last board meeting, I had Dr. Brown, who's in the audience, I think she's over my shoulder, one of them. But Dr. Brown gave an excellent report and, and addressed the creativity with what she's approaching the job. And knowing that, I mean, I think this is significant, too. You know, when we look at the data and we say that it's pretty much consistent in the percentage of kids who are meeting and exceeding, what we also have to acknowledge at the same time is those that can read are reading well, and that's, that doesn't move much, but those who are striving, right? That, that actual, that's widened. And that's, that's one of the things we've been able, we're trying to address in our literacy work at the high school. But when you look at the chart, there's a chart that's, that Dr. Beardsley alluded to about, you know, if you're in this grade the last time you had a normal school year, that's the long-term project right there. You know, the seniors really are the only group of students in the high school that had a full year of high school with, you know, a regular uninterrupted, maskless year of high school. And as we push that down into middle school and elementary school, we really begin to see the need there. So we have to be creative, and we have to work on this at a level at which we've never, we've never seen the need like this, I guess is what I could say. And it is a very big need. And it's not, it's not a 65 need, it's not a 202 need, it's, it's, it's a widespread need within the community that the high school needs to be responsible and the, and District 65 needs to be responsive to. So we'll be creative, and we're going to call on partners to, to do that, to do that.
Hi.
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate the work you're doing as well. And as a teacher and as a parent, I think about the sadness of the data and how so much comes down to the systemic racism within our district, within our communities, within our schools. And so I only say this with compassion and love that while I, I want to see our data on our kids, and I appreciate that, I, I really think about our staff who are doing their best but are also part of the systemic racism. And so I would love to see some data on what we're doing or hear about some of the ways in which we are addressing those issues as well. And not if racism is being perpetrated within our classrooms, but how and when. So that's something I'd have to deal with in my own classrooms. And that's really, I think, some of the hardest work because no one wants to admit to that. But I would like to hear a little bit more about, and I, and I really appreciate the structural, you know, and on a systemic level, the ways in which you are illustrating some of the things we're doing, but also to turn it on, really on the staff and hear about that a little bit more. And, and maybe not tonight, but as we move forward.
I think, I think that's the exact kind of feedback we need as we think about how to revision and, and restructure the goal. Thank you.
I really like the idea. Dr. Beavis and, and Stacy, you are both thinking out-of-the-box, thinking creatively about this. And it's really good to hear what, what we're doing, what's working, what we're doing that's working, but really recognizing that we are at this, this point of urgency where we have never been before. And we, we, we're experiencing a bunch of firsts. This is the first time that we've had so many of our students, pretty much all of our students. I, I stare at the chart that lists the last normal pre-COVID school year that these kids have. Every time I see that chart, I feel like I'm, I'm, I'm just taken aback by how our students have been impacted by this pandemic. And so now that we're hopefully moving out of it, we really have to think about the impact that this has had. And we, we've been hearing about how, how this is going to impact academics and, and learning, but now we're seeing the reality of what that is. And, and I, I'm hoping that in looking at this literacy goal and looking at the work that we've been doing jointly in our districts, that we can, we can see this as such a huge chance to, to rewrite this goal, to rewrite everything we've, we've been doing and thinking about, and in a real practical way. I, I appreciate the questions, the considerations, and I really like the one, where do we want to be in one year? Where do we want to be in five years? I really like looking at these, these goal, looking at this goal in a way that we will continue to keep ourselves accountable and look at what we've done and what progress we've made. And, and I'm hoping that in, in that process, that we're not so rigid that we can't tweak the goal, change the goal. Because if we're not where we want to be in a year, that's okay. We can't be afraid to name that because it's also a, a time for us to look at what we can do to, to make it right. Remember, and I know you know this, kids only have one year in high school. They go through high school one time. So we, they don't get a chance to try it again after we get it right. So there is that urgency, and we got to keep remembering that. And we also have to remember, as, as we know, that we know who these kids are. So all those dots on that chart, we know, we know them. Too bad we can't have a bigger chart. Not that we would do this, but we could put the names of every kid on that dot, on those dots, because we know who they are. So we, we know who they are, we know the backstories, and we know how to approach them. And so we just have to really be thoughtful and mindful in how we approach this, very aggressively. So, Jerry, your light is on.
Biz.
All three of us.
I know. You go, you go, wait in.
Sure. So, you know, I, I want us to both honor the moment we're in, in terms of the pandemic and what it has done for, to all of us, and also not throw up our hands and say, well, the pandemic did this, and so we can't be responsible. So I'd like to get a little more specific if we can, because I think some, we're seeing some positive results on some interventions, so I'd like us to talk about those interventions and how we expand those, sorry, interventions. So I noticed the data in our, our memo about summer lift. I think this is something we've gotten some positive information about historically. Can we expand that program? Can we get more kids in it? I know we've expanded our summer programs substantially, like, is that an area where we can target some focus? Also, looking at our academic skill centers, the, the data's looking pretty good in this first year. Is literacy lab the equivalent of that, or does, does ETHS have a similar thing? I know in your report, you talked some qualitative data about literacy lab, but I would love to see the same kind of quantitative data that we're seeing from our academic skill center where we're saying, what is it, 2.3 grades? Or I mean, something, something substantial has happened in just a few, what's that number? Stacy, I know you know it off the top of your head, maybe. Now I've put you on the spot. You can come back to me.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the exact.
Okay. I feel like it was like 2.89 or something. So like, are, you know, are we, if we're finding successes in one building, are we figuring out how to replicate it in another? Similarly, JEH has had really promising data in our, in our pre-K program. We saw basically a narrowing of that racial opportunity gap in a way that we have not seen anywhere else. So let's figure out what's working there and see how we can scale that up to every grade that, that can be. You know, I think we're, we have, have, we have kind of a host of interventions that have been added in the last year or two with our guidance counselors, with our academic skill center. Like, I'm hopeful that we're going to continue to see some data shifts with that. You know, I, I think we're already starting to see improvement, but how, how do we make sure that we're sharing what's working, you know, because we, we are, these same students are going to need those same skills and interventions later? I, I did want to ask a, a question about chart two. I, I saw that it looks like, yeah, the other one, the orange and blue one, yep. It, it looks like District 65 is mostly moving up on some of those things. That's great. It's certainly not enough, and the racial gaps are unacceptable. I was wondering if ETHS has had any analysis as to what, you said about a 10% downward trend, trend before the pandemic? I would assume that you're, you might even go further with the pandemic. Do we have any idea of what was? We, we spent a lot of time looking at what's working, what's not working, so I was curious whether there was any, had any analysis as to why you saw that dip in that period.
Sure, yeah. My only analysis would be twofold. One is that that's not cohort data, so if we looked at cohort data, we may see a different story, right? That's number one. And number two is that this is about, this is a tough sell for kids to take this test. Even though it's 20 minutes long, this right here is junior-level data, and they take a lot of tests junior year that count. They take the PSAT in the spring and then they, I mean, in the fall, and then in the spring they take the SAT. So this, you know, you do get some of that where kids just click through, so that might be some of it as well. But, you know, it does correlate fairly well with our meet succeeds on our, our SAT, according to the state benchmarks, not the SAT benchmarks. We actually do about 6% to 7% better on our state assessment compared to that, but we've dug into that and looked at it. Mathematics is a similar, you know, similar pattern there. But really, that's about two things. One is cohort strength, two is, you know, taking, taking the test seriously. I mean, you know, we give it in the spring and it's junior year. And three would be, we have made a curricular adjustments based on the SAT primarily in terms of, in terms of that, so.
Okay, so that prompts a follow-up question. Do we, do you all control when that test happens? Or is that something we, because if we find that spring folks are checked out and junior year is not good, like, if we're thinking big about
Right.
the whole program, is that something we should change, right? That it's not in 11th grade?
It's something we could consider, yeah. Or we could shift to maybe using the SAT as our exit test, which would be, you know, which does a little bit of both, and it's a high, it's, that's the one test at the high school that every, just about every student takes seriously. They enter into that with, with a serious approach. So I think that's a more accurate measure. Not, not too far out of line, but it's an accurate, it's, it's as accurate a measure, caveat, caveat, caveat. Give you a whole critique of the SAT test if we want, but in terms of the high-stakes assessment that students actively engage in, it's about as best we can do. So I think we could, we could look at that as a model for an exit.
Yeah, if that's something we have
That's a good idea.
control, that might, and we know it's, that's a major reason why the data's not reliable, then maybe we could reconsider that. So I, I would just like us to be thinking about, kind of, and I know we'll know more in the next two years with some of the interventions that 65 has put in place of what that's shifting everybody's pipeline. Certainly, for our scores that start at third grade, we have another couple of years coming of kids who have not had any normal learning experience. And so we can anticipate that this data is not likely to get better in the next two years as we get another class of third graders that has been mostly in school during a pandemic. But, you know, any thoughts on specific interventions that you feel like are really working or things that we should expand or that we should do in partnership that we're not doing now? Because I, I think we have talked about this in a general sense, and we've talked about it in, kind of, the, the systemic concerns that we have, but, but I think we have to, we have to start seeing what's working and put our, our resources behind those things.
So Biz, I think you've raised a couple of very, you know, important points, and I think as we move forward in this idea of kind of really reviewing the goal, what I'm hearing you say very loud and clear is, let's take a quick look and, not a quick look, let's take a deep look at evaluating what is and is not working in the system currently. I would say in regards to a couple of things that we brought up, we see some very promising outcomes coming potentially from ASCs as well as some other intervention spaces. We have some of our new mercy consultants' early math intervention work. We're excited about kind of a year two and year three around some summer learning options we have happening. But it is, we can see some initial indications of success, but we need to continue to monitor and measure and learn. So they're, they're not, they're not on the shelf yet. So what I can say is I hear you loud and clear, let's evaluate the thing that seems, things that seem to be emerging practices. And there are certainly around conversations in parallels of the academic skill center and some of the literacy intervention work, there's already some really nice collaboration and conversations, and the opportunities to be able to share and see work happening amongst the two district teams. And so we can certainly mine what we feel like are emerging practices in this process as we begin to look at how to potentially reboot or redesign this goal and our actions.
Great. And just to clarify, I don't think that means that we're eliminating programs that aren't working because pandemic, that might be the reason why they haven't been working, but certainly anything that has been working during this period of time should be something we really look at expanding. Thank you.
And I think it does, it gets
The red light. It does get at that last question of what does each district commit to investing in.
So Eric, you remind us all the time, I know you remind me all the time, how critical literacy is for everything else.
literacy is for everything else. Because of that, and I appreciate you guys, you know, giving us this report and not dwelling on the data, because since I've been on the board, it hasn't changed much. I mean, let's be honest, COVID has lifted a lot and it's shown us some things that we've already seen before, you know, that have already been in our society. But we discussed the literacy goal or the lack of literacy or, um, our children not reading at grade level before COVID hit. Um, so I'm glad we didn't dwell on it and we went straight to the considerations because we know what we know, what we've been knowing. And what we know is that the other word you use often, Eric, is urgency. And Pat, you said it today, this is urgent like nothing ever before. And with that urgency, my expect, my expectation is that the considerations are bold, not just creative, but how are we going to do school differently? Because we can't keep doing what we've been doing for the past eight years because it hasn't worked. So I'm, I'm hoping that we hear the words of urgency, that we know that, um, what has been done isn't working. I hope that we are open to, um, expanding the table and bringing different voices to the table to support whatever that goal will be. I'm hoping that, um, we throw heavy supports into our community where students are struggling the most because we know who they are, um, we know where they are. So I'm hoping when we partner, we are very intentional about how we partner and where we partner. Um, I'm hoping that we lift up summer lift program, um, because that was creative, that was bold. I think two to three grade levels and reading score for summer of 2021, I, that's unheard of, that's remarkable to me. That needs to be packaged and sold. So, I mean, that is, that is bold. Um, the fact that we have students who, um, have met and exceeded the threshold for both MAP and, and STAR, I want to know who they are, where they are, what teachers they have. Because if the teachers are doing that for these students, they need to be doing it for everybody else. Um, and then, so that leads me to the considerations of that lack accountability. We can have whatever goal we want to have, but unless there's accountability of making sure that our students are reading so that they can succeed in life, so that when, cause they are all our students, I don't care if they're in third grade or 12th grade. It doesn't matter to me. Um, you know, these are our students. But if we don't have accountability on it, however you want to spread it, whether, um, wherever you want to put it, it, the goal is not going to be successful. This is not about our students, this is not their issue. It is the issue of the educator, the administration, the school board. And if we don't get it right, because students are, are waiting for us to get it right, and if we're not held accountable, the goal will not work. So all this will be a waste of time. So I, I beg you to add some level of accountability, and I can't tell you how, I just know that if I'm accountable for losing weight, I lose weight. If I'm not, I don't. Right? So there needs to be an attachment to the accountability of those that are responsible for making sure our children succeed. And so that's what I'm hoping we see, and I'm, I'm, I'm hoping I get all of this the next time we discuss this and that the urgency and the vision is there so our students know that we care about them. Right now, we're working on a 12-year plan. And nothing has, has changed. So, um, that's it, and that's all.
Thank you, Monique. That's good. All right, Sergio.
Thank you. And thank you to your team for, again, giving us this great report and then really kind of digging into, right, how do we rethink and reimagine how we educate kids? Uh, and again, we're in the 21st century. Um, again, today, this morning, I was going through the headlines, they were saying how children from K through third grade are going to need intense, uh, reading interventions because of the loss of instruction during the pandemic. But as I read that, I thought about some of the successes that we're seeing in District 65 in our preschool program, uh, and how, again, we're trying to set the, the tone in regards to ensuring that children and families, uh, are, are informed and, and, and are well-positioned to ensure that the children are, are, are ready academically, socially, emotionally. And I'm going to repeat what our, our state superintendent, Dr. Yala says, is we have to consider, uh, Maslow before Bloom's taxonomy. So again, for folks who aren't educators, you know, we need to first ensure that children and their families have the comfort of a warm home, that they're well-fed, that they're socially, emotionally ready to come to us so that they can be educated and succeed. And throughout history, all of these test scores tell us is that there's these disparities in meeting those basic human needs. So for the folks who, uh, have college degrees from Northwestern and, uh, you know, wherever, and have a hundred thousand dollar, $200,000 job and live here, their kids are scoring off the charts. And that's great. I mean, it, it, and, and they're the ones who are at the very top. For many of us, for a large percentage of us, we, we don't have that, that luxury. You don't have that multi-generational wealth. There've been multi-generational, uh, barriers to economic as well as educational opportunity. So again, being very cognizant of that as we rethink education is how do we work between school districts with our community partners to really focus on those of us, those of our, our community members who have had these systemic barriers that Mira mentioned that have been caused by white supremacy and racial inequity, right? And then put, wrap around services around not just the child, but their family as well. And then whatever we can do to, uh, again, invest in those communities, as, as Monique mentioned, to ensure that they have just as much opportunity to be able to reach, uh, all their basic needs in order for them to learn and to then increase test scores. Because that'll be the end result, right? Uh, so we, we need to take this comprehensive community approach to education where we stop isolating children as test scores and really open it up to, again, use test scores as diagnostics to see where children are at. And then for the kids who are in the lowest percentiles, okay, go to their families and say, okay, what is it that you need? Do you need, how do we make more time so you and your child can spend together, uh, you know, having, you know, recreational activities, uh, enrich, you know, enriching activities, like our most privileged folks here in this community? And, and to me, again, we, it, we, we need to take this comprehensive approach as a community. That means the city, that means Northwestern, that means, uh, social service agencies, all of us need to be at the table. And I know we do it every couple of, you know, a couple of times a year, you know, in this, in city school liaison meetings, but really have a hard conversation about how we coordinate all our efforts to ensure that our most marginalized citizens in the city get all the resources they need. So again, there's some really great pieces that are going out there. So for the city, they're think, you know, they're doing a guaranteed basic income, for instance, right? That's going to help some families with no money that, no questions asked money, you know, to, to receive money, to be able to, again, have a little breathing space economically in order so for them to be able to, again, do the things they're supposed to do and meet their basic human needs, right? That's great. Uh, we, we're doing some incredible work at District 65 around our early childhood, uh, uh, work, right? And really trying to align all our work. Uh, we're looking at our, our portrait, uh, uh, of, of, of a graduate, you know, and really taking, taking a look at how, what does it look like? As Monique was saying, what does it look like for the, that these children who are doing well, who passed both the STAR, who met multiple requirements of STAR and MAP? What do they look like? What did it take? And, and really mapping that out. And, and then again, I'm excited about, again, all, all the work around literacy. Again, like Biz, I share the, you know, I'd love to see a little bit more data on how the, again, literacy center work is aligned with the curriculum that's being taught here at, at E T H S, right? And making sure that also everything is aligned and that the transitions are smooth, right? Uh, so, so to me, again, all of those pieces are going to lead us to, to rethinking and answering all of those questions, those considerations, right? Uh, and how, how, how we, how we move forward in, in, in determining that children, how children and families and communities ultimately are, are, are successful, no matter what economic status they find themselves in now, uh, how they become successful in, throughout our whole school system and, and in this, in this particular city, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Sergio. Anybody else?
Thank you, Sergio. Thank you, colleagues, and, uh, thank you Stacy and Pete for bringing this, uh, report to us. I had a lot of reflections. Um, first, just the amount of change that has happened in District 65 since I first joined the board and we, and I sat in for my first time on these conversations. Um, it took us a long time to get to a place where we had, um, metrics to even measure and compare, uh, how we were, uh, measuring success. And so I'm really appreciative that we got to that point. Um, but it, it seems appropriate because of the pandemic and also because of the amount of structural changes and investments that we've made at District 65 for us to think about how we consider indicators of success. Um, how we think about, you know, what we are each investing in and how that's aligned. Um, and like my colleagues, some things that come to mind is the amount of focus that we've put into getting those early childhood outcomes to indicate that, uh, learning is not predicted based on the race of the individual. Um, and that kindergarten readiness and access to that is not based on the race or income of the individual. And so for the first time, you know, we're seeing something that's pretty unprecedented, um, nationally, which is that outcomes are not dependent on the race of the, the child out of our early childhood center. And so like, those are some pretty big changes. Um, and I think we have high expectations, right, for, for how that, those outcomes are going to persist. Um, one of the things that sticks out to me is the question here, the, of the considerations, what are the research-based indicators of success? And, um, I also share the value of accountability that was brought up by several of you all. And so I think we need to have a certain amount of clarity around what our indicators of success are and also accountability for those indicators of success. And I feel like what's important for that accountability to exist is visibility. We need to have visibility on what our outcomes are. And I too want to know which educators, educated children in fifth grade that show up in eighth grade, ready for high school in ninth grade and still performing in 11th grade, we need to know what that continuum is. And so when I asked for the year after year data, I was, I was looking for the cohort data that you all mentioned that we don't have. And so if there's any way for us to be able to have that cohort data, I feel like that's critical for us to be able to have a full, an accountable conversation at the board level. Um, and that does turn into accountability system-wide, because it's then our responsibility to understand that data and think about how we system correct and also system learn, right? There are some folks who have it down and then, and we need to know who that is and how those folks can help other people and how those folks can teach us as an institution, and we need to replicate that. Um, I also think the scattergram, at the first scattergram graph in the memo and in the presentation today, it would be really helpful to have that scattergram have demographic representation within it. Um, I think that's a level of visibility, um, that would translate into accountability. And I do understand that we do have demographic data in different forms, but, um, I, I think there's something that's valuable in layering that information on top of each other in that scattergram. And I think that's important because, like you said, Pat, these are individuals who are very real people, these are their, this is their lives. And if we are predicting people's, uh, aptitude and access based on their race and it's showing up on a graph, we as a governing body need to be accountable for looking at that and experiencing the emotional accountability for that. Um, and you all as minister, as administrators also need to be accountable in that way and, and so on and so forth. Um, so I, I would like to see this graph with, with the dots that are indicating students, um, and a key that indicates the race, um, of the students. Um, I think it's also important point of accountability as a district with District 65, and I don't know, um, District 202's data as intimately as I know District 65's data, but District 65's data, the reason why we are specifically doing racial equity work is because regardless of income, along the lines of race, children were not getting equitable educational opportunities, specifically along the lines of race. Um, and so I appreciate us thinking about economic access and making sure that everyone has the resources that they need to live a full and humane and dignified existence in our communities and that is necessary and it's due. Um, but I think we also have to hold ourselves as institutions accountable to the fact that, um, there are folks in our community who are black and very wealthy and whose children still were not invested in adequately and who had access to, you know, extra activities and resources and, and lovely things that still were not seen as capable and suffered the harm specifically of racism. Um, and we see that we, in District 65, we've seen that breakdown in early childhood programs and K through eight data and our special education data. The racism is real. And I will say, as a black woman who lives in this community and who has to see the interpersonal as well as institutional racism, that it is real. Um, and so we need to hold ourselves to account by making that visible. Um, and I would, I want us to, when we're thinking about indicators of success, not just think about academic outcomes, because what I try to remind myself and other folks is that those academic outcomes represent an experience. Children who have to, we are mandated by law to come to school every day in a place that is hostile to their presence, that is neglectful to their presence, are not having a happy experience. They are not having a, an experience of feeling loved, safe and cared for. And that kind of pain is not acceptable for our most, the most vulnerable people in our community. And we need to be accountable as institutions for not just thinking about outcomes, but the experience of children. And I think, you know, that's part of the reason why at District 65, we've invested in restorative practices and really started thinking about how do we measure social, emotional experience, feelings of belonging, et cetera. Um, and I'm curious how we, I, literacy is absolutely foundational and I don't question that, but that this joint literacy goal was conceived of with a different District 65. And I think as far as District 65 is right now, we are considering how we invest our time, energy and accountability lens on the outcomes and experiences of the whole child. So I'm not only concerned about how our students are reading in high school, I'm concerned with, are they showing up and feeling a sense of belonging? Are they showing up with the social, emotional skills to really benefit from all of the richness that 202 has to offer? And if not, where, where did we miss? How can we course correct? What can we do more of or differently? What can we do more of or differently or more collaboratively to make sure that's happening? And I hope that's the kind of vision that's captured in the portrait of a graduate. But I also wonder how we look at our indicators of success in order to think about how we reboot measuring our, the value and outcome of our collaborative relationship.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just wanted to bounce off what Anya has said and what others have said. We've listened to the early childhood report recently and I think several of my board colleagues have mentioned what there is to learn about that. And I just wanted to highlight two things that struck me when I heard the report that I hope we can carry through in the rest of our district work. One of them was this absolute belief that every child could learn that seemed to have really permeated the culture of JEH, Early Childhood, among the educators, among the staff, among the leadership. And I think that's essential. As an educator, I think that is an essential ingredient, that the person who is trying to teach you believes, absolutely believes in your ability to learn. And then the other aspect was the collaborative, I guess we call it deprivatizing instructional practice, right? The collaborative sharing and observing and feedback to ensure that everybody is on board, right? To ensure that everyone at every level is committed to the same goals and working together. And in my time on the board so far, we've seen places in the rest of our district buildings where that is happening and other places where it most certainly is not. So I think if we're going to take lessons from what's happening at JEH, it's those two things. And how do we make the culture and climate shifts in the other 17 buildings, right? So that every child feels that they can learn, that everyone around them believes that they can learn. And then there is collaboration at every level, co-teaching, you know, connections between, you know, tier one, tier two, tier three, all of the paraprofessionals, the supports, the wraparound services that Sergio mentioned, that everyone is on the same page and committed to the same work that is through an equity lens. And I think that's where I see the missing pieces of the, you know, the structural racism that you mentioned, that how do we dismantle that? It is absolutely culture and climate, right? So I think we can't divorce the academics from that context. And I often feel like when we're talking about test scores and curriculum and academics and learning loss, that we're missing that other piece. And I just want to say, like, I've seen that chart before about the last normal year that students have had in school. And I want to flip that script a little bit because I do feel, and I don't want to be Pollyanna-ish about it, but I do feel like we shouldn't overemphasize the deficits, right? That from a kindergartner's perspective, this is normal, right? Wearing masks to school, social distancing, you know, learning on an iPad every once in a while, you know, whatever. That is their normal. So we have to start from where they are and what are the emotional supports and social, emotional contexts that we can provide them so that they can make the learning happen, right? So I hope we can not just start from a deficit model, but see where our students are and tap into their resilience and their creativity, like we're talking about creative solutions and boldness, like let's take, let's see what our students have accomplished in the past two and a half years and build on that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sula. Donna?
Oh, thank you. So first of all, thanks again for this report. You know, we talked about being creative, brave, bold, you know, courageous. And I was thinking about the summer lift and the academic centers and all of the things that have come out of what the pandemic has forced us to add and the good that's also come out of it. I know there was a recent District 65 email about summer programming for our students, including like all of our great partnerships, you know, with YOu and additional services. I did note, you know, it was very detailed on how to get into it, you know, thanks to Melissa and the communications team. But I also couldn't help but note, you had to go through Power School and all of the different nuances. And I was just wondering, would we need further outreach to even walk certain families through how to use, you know, Power School, how to do the signups? You know, as my 10-year-old sometimes will tell me, TLDR mom, too long didn't read. And just trying to navigate that and thinking as a working parent, you know, yes, I want my child to go through the summer programming, but is there transportation? Is there going to be food? Are the hours even going to work with my schedule? So kind of using that wonder. And then, you know, looking at the charts, I think Table 2, noting that class of 2025, that grade eight, they were one of the little bit higher percentages that met the joint goal, that had me wondering, you know, was there any kind of curriculum shift, change? Also noting they were, they did have their last pre-COVID year was the completion of fifth grade. And then, you know, we were talking about creative, bold. I was thinking, well, maybe we could even shift a bit of block scheduling, middle school, just an example or thought out there. And I would actually implore 202, as for the SAT, switching to that, there are the racist historical origins of the SAT test that I would not want to perpetuate for our students. And then in addition to that, right now, so many college admissions are doing, you know, test optional, looking at maybe a more holistic process that we can support and also, you know, make these markers for literacy. So just some more wondering and thoughts? Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. And just so appreciate the input and kind of thinking about block scheduling and other options around tests. And then just to speak a little bit to summer learning, we are, we have communicated and worked with each one of our schools and are working to fill liaison positions at the school that are stipulated opportunities for educators to work with families to support registration. And I've also done outreach to social workers and other members of that school community through school leaders in order to help assist families in registering. And as of this afternoon, we had 130 kids registered to date, which is a really nice start. And we are monitoring and schools have an opportunity to be able to pull up and see the names of families that have registered so to inform who potentially we can reach out to as well. Because we are aware of that and this is a first try at this new process and we really are trying to monitor and make sure we connect with families that might need extra support. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you for the clarification and more information. Glad to hear there's been so much effort with this and process.
I had another comment. So, Sula, to your point, you mentioned the unique factors that have led to, potentially led to JEH's outcomes. And that reminded me of a report that we got at the board level probably three years ago at this point about ACC. And at the time, ACC's students who were primarily Black were, had the highest academic outcomes in the district. And what we heard at the time from ACC educators was that they did a lot of collaborative planning and instruction. And that's similar to the feedback that we got from the JEH team, that they really dig into their data together and make responsive plans and strategic plans together to tackle anything that they perceive as a challenge. And I think that kind of care, that kind of collaborative care is rooted in the belief that children can do it, that if we structure it properly and pace properly and invest properly, that children can do it. And so I just wanted to note that parallel. And I'm curious how that has showed up in any of the discussions about how we learn from each other's successes? And the other thing that occurred to me was not only the early childhood data that we had seen that was not predictable by race, but some of the data in math that we've seen during our conversations about acceleration or making, yeah, de-tracking and considering how to make access to acceleration more equitable. And that we've seen math data as well that is not predictable by race. And I think that is so uncommon to see in our nation, unfortunately, any standardized test data because of the origins of these standardized tests that does not disaggregate by race in a predictable way. And we certainly want to learn how to stop seeing that. And so how do we, how are we sharing information in ways that allow us to reproduce those outcomes? And so I just wanted to draw those two parallels. And then my third comment that I wanted to make is that I don't have a whole lot of opinions about SAT, given that my children are ages three through nine. But I do know that it took maybe like five years for us to correlate proficiency with math to proficiency with STAR. And we do not have another five years to have that conversation. So if correlating map to SAT is something that would require five years of investment and discussion, then my vote is no. If that's something that can happen with relative ease and the next time we're talking about this data, we're talking about cohort data outcomes and it happens to be SAT, then I'm okay with that. And so those, that's the extent of my additional comments. Thanks.
Point at me, Mira. So I'm not a fan of the SAT, but that's just, that's a separate life. I mean, I can, we can, we can talk about the origins of the SAT. The SAT is the alpha accountability mechanism for all high schools in Illinois right now. That's why I would encourage us to align to it. That's the only, that's the real reason. It is the measure of college, it's one of the measures of college and career readiness. It's not the sole measure. We've gone to multiple measures. The state has gone to multiple measures on that, which I think is a nice model to look at. I do think though that there's a, there's a lot to be said between what happens in kindergarten, first, second, third grade and what happens in 11th grade. And I think that's where our stardom map piece really, really pans out and helps us, particularly in those transition years into high school. But in terms of our, that's not going away. We're going to continue to report that. I think it's fair to say that that's not going away. We're going to continue absolutely to report that. So, so more data to come every year and accountability. Did I get it right, Mira?
Yes. Just the industrial complexes, you know, of testing is awful, whatever we pick.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And...
Could run a seminar on this.
Okay, did I get everybody? Did everyone have the opportunity? Who wanted the opportunity? Sergio, your light is on.
Yeah, you know, and I want to put it out there since we're talking about opening it up. I mean, again, I would be open to even replacing map. Like, and I think where we're moving towards in District 65 is localized assessments.
Here we go.
Here we are. Here we, we want to have the conversation, let's be bold. And again, agree upon, and again, it's, you know, again, I hate to say it, I know that we worked five, six years to get this. And, but we're here and you were asking us to be bold. And what, is there something that can give, give us diagnostics that can help us troubleshoot where students are at and act upon it as quickly as possible? So that's my educator mind thinking, right? Because the SATs and the, you know, the state assessments, whatever they choose to do, because that's, that contract's coming up. You know, what, and they're trying, the state's trying to rethink that as well. Like, how do you, how do you create an assessment that, again, gives you the information as educators and as school boards and school districts that we need in order to calibrate ourselves and calibrate what we're doing to meet children where they're at? So, you know, again, I would open that up too. I would, you know, I hate to say it and don't get mad at me because I know you guys worked on this hard and the previous boards have been like, we need something that, you know, give us some literacy and literacy measuring you got it here. And now it's like, okay, let's blow it up. And you're like, you may want to choke me after this meeting, but I'm just putting it out there. I'm sorry.
You know, I have a couple of big takeaways for tonight. One is this kindergarten, this pre-K piece coming out of JEH. I'm going to make sure to read up on that report and file that closely because that's super inspiring. I mean, that is, that is a game changer potentially. I'm really appreciative of that. I think the other thing I'm hearing is to be bold and thoughtful and accountable and also to think about local measures, right? Complementing, I don't think we're, I don't think we're going to stop reporting on the standardized measures. In fact, I would describe, I would encourage us to continue to report on them because that's our historic piece. But what I do hear is like the necessity to complement those with, with a more sophisticated assessment profile, which really means homegrown assessments in the classroom, trusting our teachers and actually looking at which teachers. You know, one of the things we used to talk about with Northwestern quite a bit and it'd be nice to reengage NU in this work, but to look and see where those inflection points are along a student's journey. If we notice that there's a, there's a class or there's an experience, you know, because we have that data, right? I mean, it's quantitative, but we can see where that inflection point is in the student's trajectory. And if we see some outliers where it's like, wow, this whole group of kids really took off. What's going on there? Particularly if we isolate race and then we can say, wow, really, what's going on here? What happened? And then we can, we can discuss and talk about that. The issue with that is sometimes that's way too historical. Sometimes the people who are in those classrooms have moved on. So I'm going to encourage us to figure out a way to do that earlier, identify that inflection point earlier so we can capture that from our experts in the classroom. But that's where, so I'm very encouraged by tonight. We have our work cut out for us. But this is, this is exactly the kind of feedback and input that I know Stacy and I needed coming into this. So this is, this is really good. But I just wanted to, yeah, we'll, we'll think about all those, everything that came up tonight, 100%.
And I fully echo Pete's message as well and just would underscore that we also heard loud and clear the need for urgency and owning that regardless of situations, we are accountable for students and student learning and that the work has to be done by the adults in the institutions and that you're ready to hear a creative and bold and accountable solution soon. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Yes. Very good, yeah. Good conversation. Good conversation, boards. All right. Okay, so we're going to move on. And we are at item number seven, District 65 action items.
It's a long one. All right. I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion and approve the personnel appointments, leaves and separations. January 2022, Board of Education and Committee meeting minutes. Destruction of January 2020 closed session meeting minutes and recordings. November, December 2021, Treasurers' Report and Budget Amendment. December 2021, List of Bills. February 2022, Contracts Above $25,000. Special Education Services Intergovernmental Agreement between Evans and Skokie District 65 and Maine Township High School District 207, the RFP for 2022 Summer Capital Projects.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, the next item is District 202 Information and Action Items. First information, Dr. Davis. We have a press policy issue number 108, the first reading, and that was in your packets, board?
Yes. The Policy Committee, Matt, reviewed the policies in Press 108. Recommendations are in the packet. There were only two minor edits to the policies for clarification. Everything's in your packet and they will be up for a vote at the next board meeting. Everything's in your packet, and they will be up for a vote at the next board meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Then the next item, few FOIA requests.
Oh, yeah, hold on. Let me read them out real quick for us. Okay, so there's a series of FOIA requests. We have two from Crowley, one from Meadows, one from Hirsch, one from Agnew, one, two, three, four, four more from Meadows, AOB with one, Didi with one, Sternstein with one, Gallagher with one, Perlier with one, and Mendenhall with three. And those, the responses are in your packet.
Absolutely. Thank you. So now we're at our action items for District 202. The first item is approval of purchase of two multifunction activity buses. Could I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yankee?
Yes.
Montell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rovitz?
Yes.
Ken, please.
Yes, thank you. The next item is approval of contract to replace the auditorium HVAC.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Montell?
Yes.
Parsons? Yes.
Rovitz?
Yes.
Yankee?
Yes.
Ken, please.
Yes. Next item is approval of minutes from February 7, 2022, closed session minutes, and February 7, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rovitz?
Yes. Yankee? Yes.
Montell?
Yes.
Ken, please.
Yes. Next item is approval of bills.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Andy?
Yes, please.
Montell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rovitz?
Yes.
Yes. Next item is Treasurer's Report from December 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Andy?
Yes.
Montell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rovitz?
Yes.
Ken, please.
Yes. Last item is Personnel Report.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Parsons?
Stain?
Rovitz?
Yes.
Yankee?
Yes.
Ken, please.
Yes, thank you. So we're at item number nine, District 65. Have you start?
I don't know. I just remember.
Oh, it's the adjournment. It's the adjournment.
Okay. I mean, I understand, but I don't know. I don't know. We're talking about, but I don't know.
Yeah, so we don't motion to close the meeting. We just say, we have no further business before the board that we adjourn the meeting.
I still second that.
8:44.
All right. So District 202 will adjourn to this, in closed session. We're going to adjourn to closed session to discuss 2C1, Appointment, Employment, Compensation, and Performance of Specific Employees. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. We need a roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, 202, for hosting us.
You're welcome.
Thank you.